This is the January 12th, 2021, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. I am opening the meeting by roll call vote. Once I call your name, please respond here. Diane?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Jerry?
Here.
Everyone on today's call is participating remotely via Zoom, and we also have the library director, Dina Brassa, present. Dina?
Here.
Thank you. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from December 22nd, 2020. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions to those minutes? Nope. Okay.
To accept.
All right.
A second.
Okay, all in favor by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Myself, I. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the financial report.
I sent you an up-to-date expense reports. We're at the halfway mark of the fiscal year and with 54.9% overall spent out, so I think that's pretty much where we want to be, of course. I did just want to point out as a reminder, you might notice the material line is 90% spent out. Typically, we spend that out by the end of March. I had wanted to have it spent out by the end of December, and that didn't quite happen, but it will be spent out by the end of this month. And then we'll move to spending for material through state aid, the revolving fund, and another gift account that we have. I also wanted to mention that the Friends of the Library have also agreed to give us $1,000 towards our material expenditures for this fiscal year. That's something that, as far as I know of, we haven't asked the Friends to do in the past, but the Friends did agree in December to do that. So please don't worry that we're 90% spent out on that line. We will continue to buy new material through the end of the fiscal year, so no worries. Unless you have any specific questions for me about that, that's all I wanted to mention. I do, Dina. State aid, revolving fund, and what? We have another gift account. Okay. Ariel? Okay, that's good. Okay.
Okay, nobody has any more questions? Then we need a motion?
Make a motion to accept the budget report. A second.
All in favor by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Myself, I. Thank you. For old business, we have the phased reopening plan.
I have a feeling that's going to be on the agenda for many months to come. Where, as you know, per the Board of Selectmen, we are still working with the half-remote, half-in-house plan, and so that is through, as of this time, January 23rd. It's my understanding they're meeting the week before that to discuss extending it again. So I'll certainly keep you posted. Nothing has changed really in that. You know, there are some days that are pretty tricky, I'll say that, and just have an opportunity to just commend the staff again for working through that and managing it so well, because, you know, sometimes when there's when there's only two people in the building for five or six hours, that can be a long two, five to six hours when it comes to answering the phone and keeping up our level of service. So those of us on the days that we're home, we're trying to help out as much as we can, the people who are in the building, but it's not the same as being in the building and being able to help them. So sometimes I think I'm more in the way than I am helping. But anyway, it's going really well, and the patrons aren't affected by it at all. So, you know, I just really wanted to just have a moment, once again, to say that I think the staff's doing a great job, and I really appreciate everything that they're doing to keep things running. And that's, that's all I have for the phased reopening plan. It's okay, Dina, since I feel like I'm in the way right here.
Totally agree.
I keep getting this.
All right, moving on to new business, we have the draft of the 2020 annual report.
Yes, so this is our big discussion today. Just as a reminder, this is included in the Towns Annual Report booklet that's handed out at Springtown Meeting in May. We usually see it again if there's a Fall Town Meeting, you know, the booklets are there. There's other times that they're handed out also. We keep copies of it at the library, and I know other town offices do as well, including the Town Clerk's Office. And it's certainly something that we refer back to when we're trying to, you know, just get a sense of what was happening at a particular time in the town, or, you know, hey, what did we do in, you know, 2017 when this happened, that kind of thing? So it's a good reference point, not just for us, and we have residents who come in asking to look at old town reports, and people who are doing research projects occasionally will ask for them. So really, you have to approach it as it being a historical narrative of the, you know, time period. And for me personally, I still feel very much that we're in the middle of this pandemic, so it's hard to reflect on something that's still happening. And I think maybe some reflection will come in the 2021 annual report, or the 2022 annual report even. Hopefully not much more beyond that, but in terms of this report, I really just wanted to highlight everything that we did do. And it was tricky, and I'm interested to hear what you think of it. Because, again, it's not just from me, it's from me and the board. So certainly anything that you would like to change or add, you know, will make that work, since your names are on it too. But yeah, I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around this thing, because it's just such a different, different year for us. For everybody, it's, I know we're not. But any questions, or?
The only thing I saw, right in the, in the first paragraph, you do mention the COVID-19. But then further down, where it says introducing a new way to use the library. Do you want to put it because of the COVID-19? Because it's not mentioned in any, in the rest of the?
Yeah. You're exactly, yeah, you're exactly right. I don't really ever say it again.
No, so I just thought, maybe, you know, to let them know that that was the actual reason for it. I don't know. I just, I don't know, I just kind of missed it when our epidemic, pandemic, or if you want the COVID, I don't know, either one, but I think it should be mentioned again. But like introducing the new way to use the library because of COVID?
Okay.
I don't know.
I had originally had a sentence in the section above introducing a new way to use the library. I don't have it, I don't have my drafts in front of me to reference it, but in that designing a phased reopening plan section, right above the introducing a new way, I had something in there that said, you know, I'm trying to remember, it was something like, you know, due to state restrictions and the fact that, you know, we were still being encouraged to, I don't, you know, decrease our activities, that kind of thing, we had to shift focus on versus reopening the building. I'm not saying that well at all off the top of my head. And it's probably more succinct, just to say, just how you just said it, introducing a new way to use the library because of COVID-19, like, it's probably much more succinct to say it, just how you said. So I'm fine with saying it that way, if everybody else is fine with that, too.
I just, I just thought it should be, I don't know, in there a couple of times, just to let them know that that was the reason.
Yeah, you're totally right, right. Yeah, again, I think I make some assumptions in the writing of it, because I assume that everybody knows that we're still in the middle of the pandemic, but you're right, someone who's reading this down the line
years from now.
Wouldn't necessarily know that this was still a thing, right?
And if they missed that first paragraph, then they won't know what this is all about.
Right. And next year, it might be easier to reflect than it is right now. Right, correct. So it'll be in again next year. Right. But I do like that, if that's okay, I'll just add it in, just like you said, because of COVID-19, right in that headline. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dina, I have...
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Steve.
I was just gonna say, I like the paragraph on the state certification in the library loan benefit, because it gives a roadmap to people that don't understand what's available, what's being done. And I think it's, I like it, and even spelling out the percentage of the budget on materials, I think it's, I think it's helpful to everyone, not just us and interested people.
Right. Right, and something similar is usually in the report. I mean, I did adjust it this year, but and that's exactly why I think it's, I carried on when I started, you know, writing these with former boards, I carried on including that section for that exact reason, because it's state aid and our involvement with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners and our state certification is so key to the function of our day-to-day operations, and people do not know that. If we weren't certified, we wouldn't be able to be a part of the network. I mean, we could still be a part of the network, in a sense, but, and I mean the sales network, but our patrons would not be able to borrow from sales, other sales libraries, if we weren't certified. I mean, to lose certification is a nightmare for a public library, especially a small public library. So, yeah, thanks for pointing that out. That's exactly why it's so necessary to keep it in there, because people, especially now, when we're in a very uncertain economic future, I think it's really important to remind people, or just make people aware that don't know. Great.
I just wanted to add, Dina, what an outstanding job you did with this, you know? Normally, I've had to do these myself, and you just kind of tweaked the year before and changed a few things. This has been done since pre. And I just have to applaud you for having everything. Excellent, excellent job.
Thank you. Thanks. It was, like I said, it was tricky to write, and part of the reason, yes, exactly, normally, I just tweak the year before. I change the highlights, I focus on something else cool that happened, you know, more so in one year than the other. And that was a challenge this year, because, right, it kind of just needed to be rewritten completely.
And you are limited to two pages.
Right, there's that, too, yeah. Fortunately, there's a small font, so that's, you know. The type is small, so that helps, okay.
Yeah.
I did want to say, because you know I like to talk about statistics, I'm, it's no secret to anyone that I'm very statistics-driven. And that's also a hard part of this report for me, because our statistics are back to where they were when I started at the library in 2015, before we moved to Middle Road. So we haven't seen statistics this low in a very long time, five years, and that's, that's a rough thing to see, because even though so many people are taking advantage of takeout, I mean, last week alone, we had 117 people come to the window, different people come to the window just to pick up material. Not to mention the other things that people come to the window for, but just for physical material. But before, when, when you can go into a library and browse, you, you know, might walk out with 30 books, if you're a parent, or a grandparent, or, you know, a daycare provider, you'll walk out with a stack of books. And an individual who's just, you know, going in for themselves, will maybe walk out with three or four books, because they've browsed and they've looked around. And though people are getting used to us browsing for them, most adults are still just taking one or two books at a time, or one or two DVDs at a time. So people aren't leaving with the volume that they would leave with before. So even though a lot of people are using the service, they're not borrowing in the same way. So that's definitely, like, a hard thing to see. Because we worked so hard to build those numbers up, and it's been such a point of pride since the relocation, that every year, the numbers just get higher and higher. And last year, for the first time, we circulated over 100,000 items, and it, that was something I don't think that anyone had ever imagined that we would do in Acushnet. So it's, it's, it's rough to see that, but I do, it's certainly not from lack of anyone trying, staff-wise, and it's certainly not from lack of people using the service, it's just we're, everyone's doing it differently. So I think it'll be interesting to watch that build back up, once people are able to come back in to the building. So I did want to point that out, but there are some great statistics within the report, too, that are worth, you know, noting, of course, which is why I included them, like the fact that there was an annual increase with Overdrive and the Libby app, our, you know, prime or our main source for downloading books and eBooks, excuse me, books and audiobooks. And that, we saw a 70% increase from 2019, which is a huge number. We also saw a 20% increase in Hoopla, and that's, you know, quite high as well. So there's that positive for sure, that our patrons were willing and able to borrow digitally as well. And the other number I just wanted to point out before we move on to something else is the success we've had with the BeanStack software, which we got through a state grant, and we do have that for another year. We have it till, I believe, the spring of 2022. And we started with a very modest goal last summer for reading, because we didn't know if people would use it. We didn't want to set the bar way too high, and no one could get to it. So I can't remember what exactly we started with, but I think it was, we challenged like 20,000 minutes of reading. And by the end of summer, Acushnet readers had logged over 46,000 minutes. And that's when we decided to try to tie it into the 100th anniversary of the building, which had kind of flopped because of COVID. And so we, you know, raised it to 100,000 minutes of reading, just to see what would happen. And by the end of December, readers had logged 130,000 minutes of reading, which is pretty incredible, that people are willing to do that. And it's something fun and different, and something we never would have done if it weren't for COVID, because I had looked into the product before and just didn't feel that we could afford it, or that it would be, the price was worth what we might get out of it, and so I hadn't wanted to take a chance on it. But getting it through a state grant's been great, and I could see that that might be something we would want to purchase in the future, if the opportunity presented itself, once the grant runs out. So, anyway, just want to note those statistical things, but anyway, back, back to you, and anything you might want to add or change.
Does anyone else have any more comments, or? I read through it a bunch of times, and I had the same comments as Nancy. I thought it was very well-written. I thought it was very well put together. I had to convince Dina at one point that it was, because she was, she wasn't convinced. But it was very, very good, and I think it captured absolutely everything in two pages. I do, I, there was nothing that I could think of that was missed.
The only thing I did notice, I left out our website, which I usually include in a section that's not in here. So I'm going to add in our web address under the respectfully submitted portion. I'm going to add in the web address right there. There's one line left, so I can get that in there without having to take something else out.
That sounds good.
Yeah. And it reached the point, like, as Jen knows, last week, where I was too in it. I'd spent way too much time, like, trying to do it, and then it just wasn't, it didn't seem right at all, and then I, so I sent it to Jen, and then went to my mom's house and read it out loud to her, and between reading it out loud and looking at my mom's face for certain parts, I was like, oh, no, so I immediately again and said, don't read it yet, like, I got changes coming.
It was good. I'm like, okay, I haven't read it yet.
Anyway, the other point, too, that I just want to mention real quick, I had mentioned in my email that we just got the annual numbers from sales last week, so I was still working on a couple of things, and that was under the library statistical report section. I have, I had italicized the materials holdings section, and that's the part I was still working on. So just so you're aware, we have, physically in the library, we own 22,447 books. So that's not a huge increase from last year, but you have to remember, we also discarded books throughout the year. So we added a lot of books, but that's also accounting for what we discarded. Our periodical subscription has dropped to 75, and that's not because we chose to do it that way. It's just less magazines are being published. We saw a lot of magazines come to an end last year, and some popular ones, too, and we chose not to replace them with other titles. So we're currently at 75. Our DVDs, we've got 3,531 DVDs. We have 613 audio titles. And for the downloadable content, which does not include Hoopla, because Hoopla doesn't give us a number, we have 49,539 digital titles through Overdrive and Libby. So we saw, you know, an increase of about 2,000 titles there, which is not a surprise, because we, the network and, you know, our library itself was adding a lot of titles or additional copies for readers, particularly in the spring and summer. So anyway, now I have no more comments, so you can...
Anybody else have anything to add?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Then we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2020 annual report. Second.
All in favor by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Myself, I. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll get that submitted, and that'll be a big load off. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the director's report.
So I wrote the annual report, now that's, I feel like that's all I did. I did start off just letting you know that when we got the stats for December, I was able to tabulate that between June, when takeout started, and December, we did circulate over 20,000 items, which I thought was pretty awesome, in light of the fact that no one could come in the building for browsing. So I noted that, you're, oh, right, what you have says 16,949, but I had not added in December. So it's actually 20,355. And that was through 3,665 pickups at our takeout window. And we also, through the window, distributed 1,122 take-and-make kits. And we're continuing to do those this month. We have a polar bear twirler right now that people can pick up the supplies for at the window. We also did a Beaded Penguin keychain for older kids, and we only had a limited number of those due to supply that we had on hand. So we made 29 kits, and I believe they're all gone as of this week. So we will do something similar to that. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll put out another one, because I think the people who took them home liked them enough that they'll come back for another, and maybe someone else will come check it out. So we're still very much going to keep doing those take-and-make kits, because they're clearly popular. And we've talked about working remotely. The only other thing I wanted to highlight before I get down to the updates announcement section is that the lost items list, which started as the overdue items list, that we've talked about a little bit, and then those became so overdue that the system considered them lost. Well, that list is now down to 98 items from 188 at the beginning of December. And when we started with the list, there were about 800 items on it, so it's nice to see that that's dropped down. We do think that, because everyone who got a letter, like we've talked about before, everyone who got a letter in December had already been notified either by phone, email, or text two times before we sent the letter out. So we do think the letters worked. It was sort of a last, you know, like, hey, please get this back to us. So I think seeing it maybe in that format helped. So we're going to continue to do this as items come close to the point of being marked lost in the system, which is at about 60 days. So I'm going to just continue to follow that and see if it works in, in going forward. And hopefully, we'll still get, you know, some of those items, those 98 items back. Hope, hopefully. And then in the updates announcements, I mentioned BeanStack again, and the fact that we are doing two new challenges for this year. When we initially got the BeanStack software, it's really Sandra Bethany and Elizabeth, who went forward and created the challenges. And Sandra's the one who really has done the work for these two new challenges that came out this year. So it's a great remote work project for Sandra, because it's very time-consuming, dealing with the software, and to make it look nice for the user. But she's done a fantastic job with it, and I really appreciate how she's embraced doing it. So she's got two challenges happening right now. One is the Get Snowed In Challenge, and the other is Books Like Us, which is a challenge by Simon &amp; Schuster Publishers, which celebrates diversity and also spotlights diversity through January. So as of today, readers have already completed 6,912 minutes, and it's only, you know, 11 days really into the month, because I don't know if anyone logged anything today, but we're off to a great start. For every 15 minutes of reading with the Get Snowed In Challenge, Sandra is going to put up a snowball. So as of yesterday, she had almost 300 snowballs to put up on our windows. We might tweak that a little, I don't know, but that's, it's a great visual, so when you stop by the library for takeout, you'll have to check out the visual on the windows of the community room, and I think it's going to end up beyond those windows, and maybe on the front of the building. We also have snowflakes for people who have signed up for the challenge. We've encouraged people, if they want to make a snowflake at home, we have directions on our Facebook page to how, as to how to make a snowflake at home, with, you know, whatever paper you have on hand, and you can bring it in, and we'll hang it up, or we'll make a snowflake for you and hang it up. So it's a, it'll be fun to see through the end of February how many snowballs we end up with. If everyone keeps reading at this rate, then we're going to have a lot of snowballs on our windows. But we have, we've heard from a few parents who think that BeanStack has sort of made the difference this year, as to, or starting in 2020, carrying on into 2021, in terms of their child's dedication to reading. Because we do have incentive badges, so you do earn badges for every 15 minutes of reading, and that is tweaked a little bit. But I guess kids especially are enjoying getting those badges, and it's encouraging them to participate. We also have Wildcats badges that represent 25 minutes of reading. So we've heard from one parent in particular, who's child So we've heard from one parent in particular, who's child loves earning the Wildcats badges. So we will continue to do those Wildcats badges for, um, the cushionet students who like having that. We think that's awesome. So we know that it's encouraging people. We know there's plenty of adults who are using it even as just a way to have a reading log so they can reflect back on what they've read. So, um, we love seeing how it's being used and, um, again, we're, we'll keep doing more challenges as long as people keep participating. And I appreciate, like I said, all the work that Sandra does to make it happen. So it's fun. But yeah, when you drive by or stop by for takeout, please take a look at the snowballs.
You know, how many minutes equal a snowball?
Uh, 15 minutes.
Okay.
Equals one snowball. She had, Sandra had initially said one hour and I said, well, jeez, I don't know if that's enough. Like, what if we don't get enough participation and then we only have like a few dozen snowballs? So I said, why not 15 minutes? And she's probably not thrilled that I suggested that. But hey, um, it looks cool. She started working on painting the, the snowballs on the windows yesterday and she sent me a picture. It looks awfully pretty. So I think it's, I think it's great. So we'll see.
I can't wait to check them out when I go to the library this afternoon.
Oh, good. Yes, you'll see them then. But, uh, other than that, we're just, uh, plugging along.
That's good, right?
Yeah.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or anything on the director's report or any of the announcements?
Nope.
Nope.
Do we want to set the next meeting?
Oh, wow, that didn't even occur to me. How funny. Normally I've got dates ready. I've got a whole, like, I'm telling you. Yeah, we, let's just set one so that, just so we have something on the books. And if it changes, then that's okay by me too, but, um, possibly February 2nd or February 9th. Those are, um, two, both Tuesdays.
I can't do the second, but I can do the ninth.
Okay.
If that, does the ninth work for everyone?
Oh, yeah.
It does, yep, yeah.
Okay. And if, if, um, something comes up before then, I'll, I'll be in touch because I know that they, um, I did see for the, Selectmen's agenda for this week, actually maybe for today, that they're just starting to open up talks about budgets. So I don't know when we'll be called to, in to, to talk about the budget. So if that comes up that I, I need to, you know, meet with you before then, I'll definitely be in touch and we'll let you know.
Sounds good.
And 12 o'clock is good.
Yep, 12 works for everyone.
Yeah.
So, so February 9th at noon on Zoom is the next meeting. All right. You don't have any other business? So we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor, by roll call. Diane?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And myself, aye. This January 12th, 2021, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 12:35. Thank you.
Thank you all. Happy New Year.
Take care.